I'd like to call this village board meeting of December 3rd, 2015, to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Vante?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Here.
Trustee Pochek?
Here.
And trustee Schroeder?
Will be late. Would you all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to call to order a public meeting by the mayor and board of trustees for the purpose of discussing proposed stormwater improvements which will benefit the Cambria subdivision and North Avenue corridor just west of Glenon Road. So with the public hearing being open, if there's anybody who would like to address this, born in a public hearing, or I believe Andy has some information for us, maybe?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Most of you guys know, but I'm Andy Pufont with Christopher Burke Engineering. I brought tonight with me, I brought Doug Gotham, who is our landscape architect, and I brought Darren Olson, who is our hydraulics expert, and we are basically here to talk about the North Avenue flood alleviation project that the village is undertaking. The purpose of the meeting is basically essentially an open house. We are working diligently with Public Works staff, and I know letters were individually sent out to all of the residents within the, adjacent to the project site itself, inviting them and notifying of the meeting, encouraging them to come out and participate and provide some additional information and to hear about the project itself and give them an opportunity to talk about their flood experiences, as well as to find out schedules, the cost of the project, and exactly what's going to take place and how it's going to be impacted in their particular area. So tonight, we are basically just here to kind of provide some information, and then we're going to open it up to public to answer any questions or anything like that. We did bring some exhibits back here. We didn't want to run into the board meeting time, but we did want, in case we're going to be back thereafter, we'd run through a brief presentation to basically just give everybody an opportunity to come up, take a closer look at the exhibits themselves, give them everybody an opportunity to ask any questions, and then we can answer them. So running through there, we are here for the open house for the flood, North Avenue flood alleviation project. The purpose of the meeting is to basically provide information regarding the flood control project that we're going to be undertaking in the Cambria subdivision, as well as the North Avenue corridor, in particular also the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza. We're also going to be seeking input from the public regarding the various project components that are included in the project, and then also basically giving everybody an opportunity to ask any questions and in order to get any questions answered itself. So we did provide a little diagram there, just any information that you guys have. You know, the village itself has been extremely informative in providing us information so that we can better, you know, provide a better design, that design, that information can be brought in, and we can incorporate that into our design in order to give better results and make sure the project functions exactly as anticipated. So the goal of the project itself, as we know, the Cambria subdivision, the North Avenue corridor there, as well as the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza, it's been a focal point for the community for 10 to 15 years now, as long as I've been involved with it. We've spent, the village has spent a lot of money doing roads in town. We just finished a million dollar water main and road rehabilitation project with the assistance of CDBG funds down there. So in 2008, we've done the James Court Water Main, as well as the roadway reconstruction. We've done Sydney Pearl. We've done street lighting to improve safety over there, as well as the, you know, for roadway lighting. So we've spent a lot of money. The village has done, you know, countless jobs down there trying to improve that particular area. And the next step is the flooding. As we know, that particular area is actually a low, a real low area within the community, and it's been hit hard by various flood events recently, ones that have been, I don't want to say uncharacteristic to the area, but they've been, they've been extremely large. And, you know, other communities have been impacted as well, but this particular area in Glendale Heights was also just kind of inundated and almost incapacitated for an extended period of time. The residents were kind of probably kept out of their houses. They were probably forced to throw away a lot of things. The businesses in the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza were forced to close, you know, limiting, you know, how much, you know, their sales, as well as, you know, that information coming back to the village. So basically, the goal of our particular project is actually to go ahead and reduce the depth and the frequency of the flooding in the commercial, the single-family and the multifamily residential properties in the Cambria subdivision and the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza. Below the project goal there, you can see just photos, the one on the left there is James Court Pond, and you can see that's actually James Court right there. It's actually probably under about three to four inches of water, so it's actually overtopped the pond banks, and it's basically sitting over the top of the roadway. And then you've got the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza photo on the right, and that's with the police tape around it, basically just barring off the entrance there, just basically right after a flooding event, saying that, you know, no entrance into that particular area. So a little bit about, I'll invite Darren to kind of come up and talk about the project history a little bit itself, and kind of just give some background about the various flood events that took place in 2008 and 2010, and kind of talk about the, you know, those major events itself and how it impacted the community.
Thanks, Andy. My name is Darren Olson. I'm a water resources engineer, Christopher Burke Engineering, and I've been involved with this project since about 2008. Was aware, at that time, when the really severe flooding occurred in September 2008, we can all remember that. And again, this area was hit in July of 2010 as well. During that time, we were commissioned by the village to complete a drainage study of the area. We performed very detailed hydrologic and hydraulic modeling of James Court Pond and all the water coming to it and where that water goes. That study was completed in March of 2011, where we provided an analysis of current drainage conditions, flooding that occurs, and also seven proposed drainage alternatives to reduce the, both the depth and the frequency of flooding in the area. We worked with the village staff very closely after that and selected alternative four based on the cost of that project versus the benefits of that project, and that was completed right around January of 2012. And shortly thereafter, we made a application to FEMA for what's called a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program grant, and that specifically looks at the cost of a project versus the benefits and flood damage reduction. And if those benefits are greater than the cost and funding is available, that project can move forward, and this one was able to move forward through that grant application process. It's a very lengthy process dealing with FEMA, and in September 2014, after several back-and-forth negotiations and correspondence with FEMA, that project was approved, and currently now engineering is underway.
Darren, can you please just give the acronym FEMA and that it's a federal funding?
Correct. So FEMA is the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and the grant that we applied for is the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, or HMGP for short, and it is a federal grant. So some of the, as we were looking at the projects and we're designing these different alternatives, some of the constraints that we had in this area, as Andy had indicated, this area is fairly unique in that it does have a large upstream drainage area to James Court Pond. If you were to drive by the pond, it's a triangular pond, it's fairly small in size, but there is over 200 acres of land north and upstream of there that has to drain through that pond. So an extremely large amount of water during these storm events is trying to move through James Court Pond and through that, the shopping center. There's just not enough flood storage to contain that water. There's limited storm sewer and inlet capacity out of James Court Pond and towards the downstream area going under North Avenue and further south of Menards. And this is an older area, and as these older areas were developed prior to modern stormwater management practices, they don't have safe overland flow routes. So nowadays, if the storm sewer capacity is exceeded, that water will safely travel overland to downstream areas, and this area does not have that, just because of the age of these particular developments. So we broke down our project into several components, really focusing on James Court Pond, on the storm sewer system and the Glendale Square Shopping Center, and then some downstream flood storage, and I'll talk about each one of these now. James Court Pond, we're going to be constructing a new outlet structure to get water out of James Court Pond quicker. So that'll include a new structure, some new storm sewer. We're also lowering the normal water level of the pond, and if we think of James Court Pond as a bathtub, we're lowering the bottom of the bathtub, so there is more storage that will be available in that pond at the start of a storm event. It'll also help get water out of the pond quicker. We'll be dredging the bottom of the pond, so we provide enough depth below that normal water level, and we'll be providing stabilization and restoration of the shore around the banks of the pond as we lower that normal water level. We'll also be removing the perimeter chain link fence around the pond. That generally allows geese to come in and settle in the pond and create some water quality and vegetation issues there as well. This is a schematic, an aerial photograph of James Court Pond. We see different treatment areas along the sides of the pond as we're going to be lowering the normal water level. In general, the green areas will be vegetated, shoreline areas. The yellow that you see, the thin yellow lines, will be either concrete or riprap walls along the side of the pond to stabilize those banks. Doug Gotham is here as well. He can answer, certainly answer any detailed questions that we have about the treatments to that pond. Couple photographs of some sample shoreline stabilization projects that we've done in the past. You see here, both on the left and the right, focusing on vegetation down towards the shoreline, but we also see different areas where the ledge rock, concrete rock there is shown around inlets and outlets to the pond to provide additional stabilization there. The next phase of the project will be the Glendale Square Plaza. That shopping center, as Andy had shown, receives considerable flooding as well. There's some low areas, especially towards the south side of that parking lot, as you get close to North Avenue. One of the first steps that the village worked very, very hard at was televising the storm sewer system all throughout the project area. We've identified some small points, repairs that'll need to be made with some storm sewer and utility conflicts, but we'll also be adding some new storm sewer in the shopping center parking lot, and also adding quite a bit of additional inlets to get that water into the system and move it south and downstream faster. That leads to the final phase of the project. We've worked on getting water out of James Court Pond and out of the shopping center, moving it south quicker, and now we need to store that water so we don't impact downstream properties. And there are several properties that the village owns south of Menards, which is, that area is generally the start of the creek, which is the tributary two to the east branch of the DuPage River. We'll be creating flood storage in approximately two to three different areas down there that are currently owned by the village, so there'll be no property acquisition needed. These are shown in yellow on that schematic, which you can see where the Menards is at up at the top. These will be just south of the Menards in that heavily forested area. We'll be creating flood storage that'll fill up during these large storm events. We'll be essentially passing that flood water from James Court Pond through the shopping center and down to be held in these areas, which is much safer, obviously, than in the streets and in the homes. These areas will have native plantings as well, so that will continue to function as a natural area, both during and after storm events. Some of the critical project components, not only was there a tremendous amount of work to date put in for the grant application and the engineering to date, but as we move forward, we'll continue with our engineering and our hydraulic analysis. We have to get permits through DuPage County, the Army Corps of Engineers, and there's a lot of wetlands, especially as we move into that south area of below Menards. So we have some critical wetlands that'll require some permitting. There's very complex hydraulics here. We've got storm sewers, we've got flood storage, and the area is all currently located in the regulatory flood plain and floodway. We also have coordination with IDOT and permitting with IDOT, as we'll be connecting additional storm sewers into their system under North Avenue and be doing work in the right way there. And also talked about the James Court Pond, and there's some different options for aesthetics there as we look at the stream bank stabilization along the sides of that pond. Looking at the project schedule, and I'll hand it off to Andy here, what we've done up to date, we've got the hydraulic analysis completed. The residents may have seen our survey crews out in the past month or two. Additionally, there's geotechnical analysis and environmental testing as well that's been going on, and I'll turn it over to Andy now to talk about the design engineering.
Yeah, we're, currently, we're accruing all of the information that's brought up to date. We're taking all of the hydraulic analysis results. We're bringing that into our design files. Our survey team has completed their topographic survey out there. The last two boards over there are actually our pre-final topographic survey over there, showing all of the areas that we've surveyed, the James Court Pond, the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza, and then all the way down the creek that goes from Menards all the way south, all the way down to Main Street. So you can take a look at that, and all that's going to just kind of play into our design, making sure that the hydraulics work and making sure that, you know, we can set our proper elevations on all of the storm sewers and the inlet structures to basically collect all this water and to get it into the storm sewer system and to get it to where it needs to be. So that's going to take some time. We're also got the soil borings. Our subconsultant Testing Service Corporation completed soil borings, both in the James Court Pond, to find out how much material needs to be dredged out of there, and also in the areas where we're going to be doing the excavations for the detention, the flood storage. So that way, we basically know what type of soils we're dealing with and how it can be hauled off and how it needs to be classified. So we're pulling all that information together here. We've begun our design engineering. We hope to go ahead and move forward with our design engineering over the course of the next month to two months, and we're anticipating that by maybe mid-January, that we'll be making our first submittals to DuPage County, as well as to the IDOT, as well as to the Army Corps, notifying them of the project. We've held some advanced coordination meetings with each of those agencies, notifying of the upcoming project, telling them that we are coming, try and get a kind of a jumpstart on, you know, get it in their brain, try and tell them that, hey, this project's coming, you know, is there anything else that we can do in advance, and making our submittal to try and avoid delays and try and streamline it as quickly as possible. So, you know, after we, once we get all the permits and stuff like that, unfortunately, the permitting stage is kind of a lengthy period when you're dealing with the county, when you're dealing with the state, and you're dealing with the Army Corps. You know, we anticipate that that particular element, the permitting phase, will probably talk, you know, take anywhere from four to six months in order to get responses, go back and forth with a couple re-submittals in order to get final approval. We're hoping to go out to bid about September of next year, award the project, and then begin construction like approximately in the fall of next year. So God willing, with a good construction season, we'll be able to work through the fall, maybe even into the early, early spring of 2017, make sure all of our plantings establish themselves, and then we'll be able to close out that particular project. So the good thing Darren alluded to is the fact that when we did submit to FEMA, the village was awarded back in September, I believe it was September of last year, they were awarded a total of $1,376,100. That particular cash flow covers reimbursable expenses for what was already put together for the application itself, for the permitting, as well as the construction and the construction observation. So the village is providing the additional 25% local share, and anything over and above what the village would want to incorporate into that particular project. So the 25% share, so they're getting, you know, one point, almost $1.4 million in order to put towards that particular project, which is excellent. So the estimated total project cost as of right now, which was based on the $2,012, is $1,834,800. And that, Darren talked about how the project was kind of, that project dollar amount was kind of established based during our application process, based on the benefit-cost ratio that we had to prove to FEMA, showing benefits to that particular area, you know, based on flood damages and, you know, trying removing particular properties from flood plain, et cetera. So that's how, kind of how that dollar amount was established, and we maximized that dollar amount. We actually had a benefit-cost ratio of one. We couldn't, you know, we couldn't go any more, so.
Andy, I just wanted to make sure that we mentioned that the local share, the 25% was not, it was the tax increment financing, the TIF was able to pay for that portion of our contribution to that grant, which is great, so it didn't impact all the residents in Glendale Heights. It's actually TIF funds that were available in TIF number one by Menards that were able to use to cover the local share of the grant application, which certainly helped us in our obtaining approval.
Yeah, absolutely. That is absolutely correct. So the ultimate goal of the project, hydraulics, once those are in order, basically what we're going to try and show to the village is that we've reduced the peak flood elevation by up to .9 feet, about approximately 11 inches, for a 10-year event, and reduced the peak flood elevation by, for up to six inches, I'm sorry, up to seven inches, .6 feet, for a 100-year event. Darren, maybe you can talk just quickly, or confirm what I'm going to say here regarding a 10-year and 100-year event. Those are basically classifications of a rainfall, and a little misleading to a lot of people that says 100-year event, that doesn't mean that you only get it once every 100 years. That means that based on historical information, that the likelihood of receiving that event is once every 100 years. And confirm that what the events were in 2008 and 2010?
Correct. And just to dovetail a little bit on what Andy's saying, 100-year event is technically, has a 1% chance of occurring in any given year. A 10-year event has a 10% chance of occurring in any given year. So it's all about percentages. You can certainly have 100-year storm events in back-to-back years, and in fact, here we saw the September 2008 event was nearly a 50-year event, and then very shortly thereafter, in 2010, we got nearly an identical event. So global warming and climate change certainly is changing how this is skewed, but as Andy had indicated, this project will reduce the depth and the frequency of flooding in this area of the village, but it will not solve the flooding. And that's something that's key to note, is that all the residents should certainly, in all areas, do everything they can to protect themselves from flooding.
That's really all we have. We'd like to open it up to any questions that the board may have. We'd be happy to answer anything else. Otherwise, we were going to open it up to just kind of stand by the exhibits in the back. If you wanted to come up and get a closer look and ask any questions, you're more than welcome to. We can answer anything we can. We do have a sign-in sheet. Part of the FEMA grant itself is basically is asked for public participation. All this is going to be televised, and we all, we've sent out the letters to all of the public itself. We do want to just kind of document the fact that, you know, this was a public meeting, and we do have a sign-in sheet. So any residents that are in the audience, please, please sign in before you leave today. We would appreciate that, so.
Before I call on anybody for questions, I just want to do a special thank you to our engineers, our attorneys, our Public Works Department, for putting all this information together and filing for this grant, which technically the village of Glendale Heights is going to benefit. With the FEMA funds and the TIF money being used, we're getting almost a $2 million project that's coming out of anybody's tax pockets, which is, in this day and age, that's wonderful. So thank you so much for your hard work and dedication for getting us to this point.
I think Public Works has put in a tremendous amount of time. You know, they're televising crews, their design and their engineers have gone through old record drawings of the Menards, of the Venture that was there before, you know, scouring through the archives, finding out, you know, how that storm sewer system is working, making sure that we got the exact sizes properly.
Oh.
You know, the televising guys is knee-deep in silt in the bottom of, you know, large diameter storm sewers, you know, near North Avenue. So, you know, we appreciate all that work and all that advanced coordination, so it's been very helpful to us, so.
Pat?
Yes, so we're looking at three retention ponds?
We're trying to isolate that. Currently, we're looking at three particular areas. If we can streamline it based on the topography, all of our preliminary information, we were using a two-foot topography that was provided by DuPage County. So all the exact elevations were kind of, we were trying to, you know, make it work with the, with the area, the information that we had without our full topographic survey. Now that we've got our full topographic survey, we can actually design down to like a hundredth of a foot, so we're a lot more accurate, and I think we're potentially looking at the possibility of streamlining it and being able to knock it down to two locations, so.
Okay, the one on, the one on James Court, you said you're going to dig it deeper. How deep are you going to dig that?
Basically, the, scroll back here. The information that we have right out there is that there's probably about, the pond's approximately four or five feet deep right now. It's showing basically kind of like a silted-in area of approximately three or four feet below that as well, and that's just all information, all debris and sediment that's kind of come through the storm sewer system and kind of accumulated at the bottom of the pond for probably since the 60s and 70s when the area was developed. And so really, what we're planning on doing is probably excavating probably about a foot or two, since we're going to be lowering the normal water elevation about a foot, we're going to be taking another foot off the bottom itself, so.
Making it wider or anything, or just deep?
The shape, for the most part, is not going to be changing. We're going to basically just kind of be armoring the sides, lowering the water elevation itself, and then scooping out the bottom.
Okay, and then you say you're going to put riprap. I mean, do you know how many inches? I mean, you know, it comes, that stone comes in two, three, five?
Right now, we haven't sized the riprap or we haven't sized the wall. We'll talk a lot with the Public Works kind of about, once we get some costs, about the different possibilities of, you know, how to armor those and kind of create a nice, something that's aesthetically pleasing. The reason why Doug's here is to basically answer any questions. You know, as the engineers, we're all about functionality. Doug's here to incorporate and make sure the functional things look good. So, you know, he's going to basically turn around and add that aesthetic element, you know, to our particular design, so that when you're looking at it, you know, it's a nice, it's an attractive place, it, you know, it's a place that kind of attracts, you know, people to, you know, walk by and look at it and, you know, and everything like that. So it's something to be proud of, so.
Okay, one more question. Are they water, are them sewer systems and IDOT North Avenue going to take all their water?
And maybe Darren can talk a little bit about the hydraulics. Basically, I think, if I can, in short, basically what we found is that there's not enough inlet capacity, there's not enough drainage structures with open grates to allow the water to get into the system in order to fill the storm sewer system beneath North Avenue. Basically, our analysis has basically provided that we're underutilizing the capacity of the storm sewer beneath North Avenue. So by adding all of these additional inlets, it's allowing it to get off the pavement into the storm sewer system and to utilize that full capacity of that storm sewer system that runs beneath North Avenue, south through the Menards parking lot, and then opens up into the creek channel.
So we're going to put the same-sized piping connected to North Avenue? Are we going to use the same type piping?
I think we'll be putting concrete piping is what we'd be planning on putting in, so. And I think we might be upsizing some of the, a few storm sewer systems just north of that complex, up north of that North Avenue connection.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
The impact on North Avenue, are you going to be just line boring underneath of it to put in the storm sewer? Is it going to?
What we're actually going to be doing is we're actually going to be tying into the existing storm sewer system, which is beneath North Avenue. So we don't anticipate at this time doing any improvements beneath North Avenue. The storm sewer system, with the help of the televising tapes, we've also reached out to IDOT to, you know, to basically clean that section underneath North Avenue. We drafted a letter on the mayor's behalf, submitted that to them, along with the village's televising tapes of what they were able to accomplish underneath there. What we found is that the structural integrity and the condition of that pipe underneath there is actually, it's a fair condition. So we're not actually planning on doing any improvements beneath North Avenue. When we did meet with IDOT staff in one of our advanced coordination meetings, we did talk about making sure that our hydraulic analysis, when we present that to IDOT, we present for a highway permit, a highway and hydraulics permit, that we're actually showing that we're not going to be having any surface flooding. So none of the storm water is going to surcharge out of those pipes onto the roadway and cause a hazardous condition to any drivers.
Thank you.
Chester?
I've got a couple of questions. First one, you're starting this in the fall of '16 and ending in February of '17. Why are you doing it in the winter months when we got that severe winters here? Why can't you do it in like in March, April, May?
Right now, a lot of the excavation can take place during the winter time. You know, the ground will be hard, you know, as far as the clearing and stuff like that, so we can, we can begin and we can do some work over the winter time. And obviously, once the grass and stuff establishes itself, we'd want to wait till like the springtime in order to make sure everything establishes it before we close the contract. We can certainly bump it back. What we're up against is basically a termination date of the grant that was provided by What we're up against is basically a termination date of the grant that was provided by FEMA. FEMA has basically come to us, and the actual, originally, the grant, they only gave us until December 31st of this year. Having gone through the design engineering phase, we asked, we requested an extension, and they were only able to provide extension till February of 2017 at this particular time. What we hope to do is if the permitting is able to take place a lot sooner, we might be able to, you know, fingers crossed, if we were able to get those permits quickly, we'd actually be able to construct the whole thing during the fall of next year. But in the event that it does need to get pushed out, we certainly have discussions with the village and discuss how that can take place if we wanted to push all of construction into '17.
Say if your cost goes over to your estimated, who's going to be responsible for that? The 25% for the village or what?
Right now, anything over and above, because we've maxed out our benefit-cost ratio, we've basically maxed out what the federal agency will provide. I'm not sure whether they are open to any, it's unlikely, probably based on the fact that if we had to go back for additional costs. We think we've got it pretty well covered as far as where our application was permitted, basically what, you know, the scopes haven't changed that drastically from what we originally estimated for our cost, what it was. But I think to answer your question, I think anything over and above what the total project cost would be the responsibility of the village.
Correct. And just to add to that, we've had several internal meetings with Public Works and Finance and Administration to understand additional costs and how those would be incurred. It was specifically related to some of the costs with the pond and the landscaping are not covered by the FEMA grants. So we're being very careful to monitor what types of landscaping we're doing out there to make it aesthetically pleasing, but also mindful that there's some things that are not covered by the FEMA grant. But we are having internal meetings about that.
One other thing, will we have to close North Avenue at any point?
I don't believe so. No permanent closures to North Avenue. We might request a lane closure, you know, depending on where the ultimate location of the storm sewers are installed at. There probably is going to be definitely some impacts to the entrance of the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza while we're doing the construction itself. But a lot of that will be coordinated during our permit with IDOT. But I don't anticipate anything more than like a daily lane closure between, you know, the hours of 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, so nothing permanent.
You can be working at night also or just in the daytime?
Not at this time, you know, I think it's just going to be daytime construction.
Okay. One other last question. Will the residents in James Court, will they require flood insurance?
I think the way the maps are all currently shown is that most of them are impacted by the flood plain or the floodway out there in that particular area. Without having the map in front of me, most of those properties have flooded in the past, and a lot of that's based on the mortgages that each of the individual property owners have themselves on whether flood insurance is required in order to basically to mortgage that particular home itself, based on the repeat history of flooding in the particular area. I think it would probably be our recommendation at this time that most of those residents do, you know, based on your history itself, that you do have flood insurance.
All right. Thank you.
They already do. And with the county maps, we are seeing that they're including them and they're continuing to include them in the flood insurance.
I believe so.
Yes.
Is there anyone in the public that wishes? Oh, I'm sorry. Bill?
Okay. You indicate that flooding will be reduced but not eliminated. Do you have a estimate as to how much of a reduction we can expect to see from this project?
Based on the elevations, I think there was an approximate depth that we had kind of calculated of 11 inches and seven inches based on a particular event, you know, in that particular area, based on those particular storm events. When we did our initial hydraulic report, we put together seven alternatives for the village. When we discussed with the village, those alternatives ranged from like a quarter-million-dollar project all the way up to like $20 million, which was the fix-all. And based on the benefit-cost ratio that we could prove to FEMA, you know, we kind of worked with the village and selected Alternative Four, which basically kind of encompasses the scope that we've talked about tonight. But ultimately, I think this is the benefits that we would hope to receive is, you know, the 11 inches to nine inches, you know, based on the particular storm events. And that's basically, you know, say if you're, you had a commercial building and it was 11 inches high coming in your front doorstep, we would hope to, you know, drop that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Nobody else on the board?
Oh, I knew it. I have to say it. So if we're looking at a 10-inch flood, we're going to reduce that only by two inches?
Well, I'm the hydraulics expert to answer that one.
So going back to the different flood events, here, and I'll use the one up at the top, the 10-year return interval storm event, so a storm event that has a 10% chance in occurring in any given year. If you were in a home and you flooded up to here, that would be dropped 10 inches. So for many of the homes, if they had six inches of water in the home, they would have no water in the home because that flood elevation has dropped below the low entry of that home.
All right. But if I'm a homeowner and my basement flooded, and I get a foot of water, and now I'm only getting nine, I might as well get a foot.
Well, it wouldn't go from a foot down to nine. It would go from a foot down to depending on the, to one or five.
I mean, flooding is flooding, no matter if you've got 20 inches or five inches. You know what I'm saying?
And with this project, as Andy had indicated, we maximize the amount of benefits that we get from this project, given the cost of the project. And so we feel that there will be a tremendous amount of benefits to the residents here, given the significant, we're talking almost a foot of flood depth reduction throughout this part of the village.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to add that we also have to be mindful of the liability of announcing to the residents that we would completely eliminate any flooding, because with that low of an area, that's just not possible unless you spend $20 million. So what we've done in any communication is we've been very careful to explain to the businesses and the residents of what this project entails and that we will be reducing the normal flooding that happens, you know, in the regular rains. But certainly in those heavy, heavy 100-year ones, that's where you're still going to see flooding. So you're reducing the normal stuff, though, which is what we've been very careful to communicate that clearly to the residents and the businesses.
That's exactly it. Perfect. Well said.
Bill?
One more question. You say you're adding additional grates along North Avenue to increase the flow into the, is that going to be on the IDOT right away? In the shopping center? And if it's in the shopping center, who's going to be responsible for making sure that debris and those are kept clean?
Currently, the village has a stormwater utility easement to maintain the storm sewer system that goes through that complex itself. You know, with those lines located, we hope to be able to, kind of, if we can, install those grates within the easements themselves. We do have planned to meet with the Glendale Square, Glendale Plaza Shopping Square owner to discuss the possibility that easements may be required from them in order to install that, install additional grates that might be outside of the additional, or the existing easements. But I believe, based on our preliminary analysis, that most of those grates will probably be actually outside of the North Avenue right away, right near that entrance of the Glendale Square Shopping Plaza.
I guess there's no more questions from up here. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to ask any questions in this public hearing regarding? Would you please step up to the podium so it can be on the tape? And could you give your name and address, please?
My name is Michael Tirana, 22W-550 Second Place. You're taking the water on the north side of North Avenue, on the pipes underneath North Avenue, and then it's going to go into the creek? And when it gets to the creek, what's going to happen to it then? It'll be absorbed?
No, it'll be stored.
It'll be stored in a creek?
Correct. And it's in the flood storage basins that we're constructing on the creek.
A basin is a what?
A big pond, big bathtub there that'll be...
But it's already a wetland.
That's correct. We're expanding that one.
And you're going to put more water in the wetland? Will it, how quickly does it get absorbed?
We're not.
We're not counting on it being absorbed, we're counting on storing it and then releasing it slowly.
Okay. And when it releases, it goes downstream to where?
That goes under Main Street, Glenellen Road, and then heads towards the east to the east branch of the DuPage River.
Around Churchill Woods?
That's correct.
Okay. And will it affect wells or septic systems that are adjacent to the wetland?
Nope. We're not anticipating any additional groundwater to be flowing into there.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up and comment or ask a question? Thank you very much. A motion to close the public hearing would be in order. Trustee Fonte?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our public hearing is closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be happy when this whole project's over.
Just a reminder, thank you for anybody who came. Please sign in. That is an important part of our grant application, so please sign the sign-in sheet up in.
Correct. Thank you.
Sorry. Talk fast. So it doesn't... Yeah, now we go on to petitions and communications. Is there, Mike? Would it be better if we moved the presentation?
Yes, ma'am, it would.
I kind of figured it might be, because I know they've been sitting here for a while, so. So if the board doesn't mind, we're skipping down to number two and then we'll...
Not at all.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to come up before the petitions and the announcements. We do have a good number of our shift here to honor one of our officers who was able to do something that most officers kind of get in the line of duty as police officers to do, and that's to make a difference in a person's life. And the ultimate way to make a difference in a person's life is to actually save a life. And we're here to honor Officer Paul Jimenez. Come on up, Paul. For taking actions in saving a gentleman's life on November 1st. On November 1st, Paul was summoned to a residence where, to assist the fire department, the subject was unresponsive. Upon arrival on the scene, Paul got inside, was met by the victim's wife, pointed him upstairs, and when Paul got to the top of the stairs, he found a 45-year-old male unconscious on the floor, not breathing. And what he did find there was the 45-year-old male's 10-year-old daughter doing chest compressions after being given directions from the telecommunicator at DuCom on how to do that. And Jennifer was going to be here tonight, and I'd, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think she was able to make it. I know she, it was planned that she would be here, so we'll have to bring her back on another day. But Paul got there, he relieved Jennifer, did a sternum rub on the victim, got no response again, hooked up his AED. Again, the AED told him no shock was in order, but to commence CPR, which he did, until Glenside Fire District paramedics arrived on the scene and took over lifesaving duties. This gentleman survived. He was here. He was going to be here tonight with his daughter. So the police department would like to recognize Paul for the efforts that he took in saving this gentleman's life. Certainly, the chest compressions that he did and the actions that he took were effective in prolonging this person's life until trained paramedics could get there and perform additional lifesaving techniques and get him to the hospital to do, to continue to do those lifesaving techniques. So Paul, in recognition and through your actions and dedication to duty, we present to you this lifesaving award for the preservation of life.
Congratulations.
that on your uniform from now on. Mayor, thank you very much.
Now, thank you, and thank you, Paul, and all our cops out there. I know it's been a very bad time for police departments all over, whether it's fair or not. You guys have done a phenomenal job. Totally appreciate it. And keep saving those lives, please. Okay, now we go to community announcements. Trustee Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Visit the historic house on December 7th from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM at 311 Windy Point Drive and experience what a Victorian Christmas might have been 100 years ago. Admission is free and refreshments will be served. Tours of the home will be offered, and children will have an opportunity to make a Victorian decoration to take home. For more information on Victorian Christmas, please contact the mayor's office at 630-909-5303. Do you wish to spread the holiday cheer to individuals and families financially struggling to purchase gifts or a holiday meal for their family? The Village of Glendale Heights Christmas Sharing Committee is in need of your help. Gift tags listing wished-for items are decorating trees located on the first floors of the Civic Center, Center for Senior Citizens, and the Sports Hub. Please attach the gift tag to your unwrapped gift donation and return it to the Civic Center or the Center for Senior Citizens by December 4th. For more information on how you can get involved in Christmas sharing, please contact Debbie McKenzie at 630-260-6050. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Fonte?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The next Coffee with the Mayor and Village Board is scheduled for Saturday, December 5th, from 10:00 AM till noon at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at 630-909-5303. Breakfast with Santa will be celebrated at Glendale Lakes Golf Club on Saturday, December 12th, from 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM. Breakfast includes all-you-can-eat pancakes with sausage and a beverage. The price of an adult breakfast is $5, and a children's breakfast is $3. Photos of Mr. and Mrs. Claus are $2. No registration is required, and the event fee is paid at the door. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Trustee Fonte?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Sign up today for PATH Winter Break Camp. Exciting field trips to Chicago, along with other local area spots, highlight the two-week-long camp. Our counselors maintain a safe, fun, and caring environment while sharing new experiences with the children. Camp is available weekdays during winter break, with the exception of Christmas Day and New Year's Day. You do not have to be in, you do not have to be in the PATH after-school program to participate. For more information and a complete schedule for Winter Break Camp, please visit www.ghprf.com or call 630-260-6060.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mike. Trustee Meritado?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights is collecting broken or unused holiday lights through April of 2016. Lights can be dropped off at the Public Works Garage at 1635 Glen Allen Road on weekdays from 7:30 AM to 3:00 PM. Lights accepted for recycling include all colors and lengths of mini lights, C7s, C9, rope lights, LED lights, and a... rope lights, LED lights, and extension cords. For more information on how holiday lights recycling, please call 630-260-6000. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pojack.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Office of Administrative Services reminds businesses that the deadline for renewing their annual village business license is Thursday, December 31st, 2015. Please carefully complete and return a form with payment to the Village of Glendale Heights Attention Business Licenses. If you have not yet received your business license renewal form or for any additional information, please contact Administrative Services at 630-260-6000. The Glendale Heights Police Department is asking residents to check on their relatives and friends to assure that they are not in need of assistance due to extreme weather conditions. Glendale Heights has a warming shelter in place and is ready to assist the needs of our residents. For more information, call the police department non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. As a reminder, in any emergency, you should always call 911 for immediate assistance. During periods of extreme weather, the police department will activate the senior call list to check on senior citizens. Senior or their family members may ask to be placed on this list by picking up a form at the Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens or contacting the police department's Community Outreach Specialist at 630-909-5459, or the Center for Senior Citizens at 630-260-6050. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Schroder.
Thank you, Mayor Jackson.
You're welcome.
Just a reminder to residents that per village code, please do not shovel, snow blow, or plow any snow on village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any snow for safe driving. If you have any questions, please call the police department non-emergency number at Also, the police department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the village during the snowfall. There is no parking allowed on street, village streets designated as snow routes for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 24 hours after a snowfall of two or more inches. And there is no parking allowed on any village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding winter parking regulations or restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mary. We now go on to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being nun, you have the consent agenda before you. Trustee Miratato.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Fonte?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business. And new business number one is a motion to waive first reading on new business item number three. Trustee Fonte.
Motion to waive first reading on item, business item number three.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First reading is waived on item number three. Number two is an ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the purchase by the Village of Glendale Heights of Microsoft software licenses for the village's desktop and laptop computers. This is first reading. Number three is an ordinance to amend a previously approved planned unit development known as High Grove West for the property located at 175 West Army Trail Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. And this was from the November 19th Committee of the Hall meeting. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2015-91. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mayor, is that 90 or 91? It says 90 here.
She just...
It's 91.
Oh, it's 91? All right, let me change it, thank you.
90 was passed in the consent agenda.
All right.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
And Trustee Fonte?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-91 is approved. Number four is a resolution to approve a certain plat of re-subdivision entitled Target Resubdivision in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This would be resolution number 2015-R-70. Trustee Miratato?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Chester.
Just a clarification, is this for the Outlets?
Yes.
At Target?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no further discussion, roll call vote.
Mayor? Do they have any...
Oh, Sharon.
Do they have any idea of anybody coming in there, or...
They do, but they haven't shared.
Oh, okay. Just curious, just...
Yep.
Came to the top of my head, thanks.
You're welcome.
As soon as we know, we certainly will make sure everybody knows. Right now, it's confidential.
Okay, just pondering.
Okay, no further questions, roll call vote.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Fonte?
Yes.
And Trustee Light?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-R-70 is approved. Number five is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 700 regarding Public Works and Parks employees. This is resolution 2015-R-71. Trustee Pojack?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Fonte?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
And Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-R-71 is approved. Number six is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award for 2015 sanitary sewer repairs in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. And this would be resolution 2015-R-72. Trustee Miratato?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Fonte?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-R-72 is approved. We now go back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being nun, we have no executive session, so... Trustee Fonte?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This board meeting is over, and Mary, you have Committee of the Hall, I believe.
There you go. Oh. Do I hear? Just one moment. Not coming up the way I wanted, okay. Would the secretary please note whose presence?
So noted.
All right, this is the meeting of the hall of December 3rd, 2015. Are there any additions or deletions?
No.
All right. Anyone in the public wish to make a comment? Okay. Committee recommendations, there are none. Our discussion regarding liability insurance renewal, and this goes to Roger.
Okay, I'll get us started real quickly. January 1st marks the annual renewal of our liability insurance coverage and our workers' comp coverage. The contract for these services is through Mezzaro, who acts as the village's broker for liability insurance. The intent of sought proposals for the actual coverage from private insurers. Currently, we use Travelers for part of our insurance. We use Hanover Insurance and Safety National for our current insurance. So we have Leah Cosad here from Mezzaro, and we're going to make her tell us everything about it with the numbers and make sure we're all here at the end.
So for your bedtime story, correct? Good evening, Village trustees, Mayor. My name is Leah Cosad. As Roger indicated, work with Mezzaro Insurance Services. We place your insurance. Travelers is your carrier for the casualty. And specifically, they've done a wonderful job in partnering with the village, and they worked with us this year and basically came in at a flat premium renewal. So we are very happy to present that. The total number at this time for the liability is $309,539, a nominal reduction of roughly $400 from last year. The property carrier is Hanover, and the crime coverage, which would be your, basically, employee dishonesty. The employee dishonesty is on a three-year term. This is the last year of that term, so the premium stays flat. It's at $2,398. The property for buildings, contents, et cetera, is renewing this year at $68,526. That is a slight increase over last year's. The overall rate went up approximately 5% in exposure, so building values, vehicles, pardon me, not vehicles, Travelers covers the vehicles, but, excuse me, the building, the contents, those things had a slight increase in values and exposures. In part, the reason of the increase, there was a water damage claim, working with Hanover. I think we came to a very good resolution of that claim. And also, while it is an increase in premium, it is a very competitive pricing. We moved the coverage to Hanover roughly in the 2013-14 renewal, and at that time, they saved us $20,000 from the previous carrier. So Hanover has been a good partner as well. The last line of coverage that is renewing on January 1st is the workers' compensation coverage. It is with Safety National. Consistently, for the last two decades, Safety National has been the most competitively-priced carrier for the state of Illinois, and they have been, what we would say, kind of price-adjusting. They have been slightly increasing their rate to be more in line with what the marketplace is pricing. The reason I bring that up is the village does an excellent job in managing their work comp claims. Safety National offered a flat rate, which is basically unheard of. So kudos to your staffing and handling of those, the work comp claims. And while the premium as a whole went up, that is strictly exposure. So the renewal amount for the workers' compensation is $79,256, including Mezzaro's service fee, which this year is at $39,000. That brings your total insurance program to $4,990... Pardon me, $498,719. Yeah, let me try that again. So $498,719 is your total insurance program for the 1-1 renewal. So like I said, it's been always, I've worked with this account going on eight years now, and it's always a pleasure. It's a very well-run village, and it's always an honor to work with Rocky and Roger and also Nicole. So I want to thank you for your time. Is there any questions?
Yeah, I'd like that $4,000 one.
Yeah.
I already tried that, it doesn't work.
I'd love to be able to do that, but...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was very nice.
Well, and basically, so what we're recommending while we're here is that we renew with Travelers for crime liability and loss prevention.
Just to clarify, crime would be with Hanover?
With Hanover, okay. That we renew with Hanover for crime and property, and that we renew with...
Travelers.
National for excess workers' comp.
Correct.
For the year. We do not, we're only looking for direction because Mezzaro contracts with them as part of their services. So we're only looking for direction from the board, no further action other than that.
Go for it.
Go for it.
Go for it.
I love the sounds of it.
I want to give kudos also to Mezzaro as our brokers and monitoring the market so well for us and holding internal meetings with us to prepare for tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
Leah, it's a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, likewise. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, number two is the entertainment permit renewal for Schlitzer Plast located at 729 East North Avenue. Mayor Jackson?
Moving to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion, nothing? Okay, number three, entertainment permit renewal for Jazz Pub and Grill located at 338 East Army Trail Road. Trustee Fonte?
Moving to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion? All right, okay, that's accepted. There is no deletions or additions. Does anybody, yes, Mayor?
I was just going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.